Okay, it's 6:30, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have to pledge and then a moment aside.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the financial report. Approve the claims of number 15, 223 through 15, 408, a total of $1,560,548. Are there any questions on the claims? If not, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Jenny.
Second.
And second by Rick. Any other discussion? All in favor, right hand please. Okay, motion carried 7-0. Payrolls. If they have a chance to look through them. There's no questions, I have a motion to approve payrolls.
Motion.
And a motion by Rick.
My second.
Second by Stacy. Any other discussion? All in favor, right hand. Okay, motion carried 7-0. Okay, funds report.
Funds report for March. I added a column on the education and operations reports showing the transfer from the education fund to the operations fund. So, on the education fund, in March, we had receipts of $995,387.57, monthly expenses of $1,050,799.86. We also transferred $276,000 to the education fund, left us with $266,393.28. Debt service fund, receipts of $8,201.71. Cash balance is $1,909,313.14. And in the operations fund, we had receipts of $15,285.9. We transferred the $276,000 into that account, that fund. We had expenses of $382,852.66, which gave us a cash balance, or gives us a cash balance of $1,874,368.98.
Any questions?
Todd, is that transfer going to be done quarterly? Or is that going to be on a monthly basis going forward?
I kind of, well, I kind of, when we worded the resolution, put it as a year amount. I wanted to be, have some flexibility. Not sure how things would roll out as the years go on. So I want to try to get it clumped to where we are doing it monthly. So, but that, that was for basically the first two months of the year.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll need a motion to approve the funds report.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Sandy.
My second.
Second by Jenny. Any other discussion? All in favor. Okay, motion carried 7-0. Okay, under consent items, we have the minutes of the March 11th, 2019 regular board meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I had a question about, let me find it. It was when we were discussing the claims, yes, under number two. I remember this discussion, but I didn't know if it had to be specific in the minutes which claim number was pulled, if that was something that you'd ever reference again and need to know, or if it was fine to keep it open that there was a check that was pulled.
Yeah, we can go in and, that would be a good idea, absolutely. That was with the board docs.
That was my recollection, that was the claim on board docs.
Did we find out what that was?
It was for a package, the Elite Package, or a Premier Package, that we don't use. We use just the basic and standard and are fine with that and seems to be functioning well. So we elected not to pay the premium cost out, too. Just has more bells and whistles that I definitely would use.
Okay, are there any other questions? Then we have the minutes of the April 8 study session. Any additions or corrections to that? If not, we'll need a motion to approve the consent items, minutes from the March 11th regular board meeting and the April 8 study session.
I move that we accept the consent items with that correction on number two for the March 11th, 2019.
Okay. Motion made with a correction by Jenny.
My second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? All in favor, right? Okay, motion carried 7-0. Okay, we're moving to action items. Approval of the Columbia Riddle changes in the student handbook.
Jason, do you mind leading through the discussion just as you did previous? I think that there are just two changes that both Columbia and Riddle would be consistent on and...
Yeah, if you go down to the first highlight, I believe it's maybe page... There is the first one. The e-learning days, just a simple explanation to parents about our e-learning days, when we use them, and then the bit about, you know, the work if it's not completed, how that can affect the attendance and getting attendance for that. And then we removed the word "custodial" from the parental involvement portion of the handbook, so that it would just read "Parents of our schoolchildren are welcome" instead of just "custodial parents." So those are the only changes that we are recommending at this time.
And that would be for both Columbia and Riddle.
For both Columbia and Riddle.
Anybody have any questions for Jason?
Luke would also like to present the same.
Any questions for Luke? Okay, let's go ahead and combine it with the preschool with the Columbia Riddle student handbooks.
Jenny, anything you'd like to share or go through? So, last year, we had just one handbook for our two Gen Ed preschools and our developmental delay preschool. And it was kind of confusing, we felt like, for parents. So this year, we just divided those and made two handbooks. So one handbook is for the Little Zebras preschool, that's for our two Gen Ed preschools. And then our Smart Start preschool is for our developmental delay preschool. So basically, I just divided those out, so they're separate. The times for the developmental delay preschool are going to change next year. The morning class, which is the three-year-olds, will be 8:15 to 10:45. And the PM class, which is the four-year-olds, will be 12:00 to 12:30. So that's reflected in the handbook. Drop-off and pickup procedures are just updated for each group. We did put something in there for if there's a delay, two-hour, three-hour delay. And I think we added an attendance procedure. There wasn't any attendance procedure in there. Based on the, for the Gen Ed preschool, that's based on the community foundations attendance policy, because several of our students get scholarships from the community foundation, so... Any questions?
What times did you say for the one that...
The developmental delay preschool?
Yeah, for the afternoon.
Is, the afternoon's 12:00 to 2:30.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the Columbia Riddle changes and the approval of the preschool Columbia Riddle student handbooks.
I make a motion that we approve all handbooks.
Okay, motion by Stacy.
Second.
And a second by Rick. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried 7-0. Thank you. Approval of the terrazzo flooring event.
So part of our bond project money, one of the projects that we had outlined was the cleaning of the terrazzo floor at the high school. If you look, there are places where construction has gone through and they've placed tape on those and when you pull it back, you can definitively see the difference of where the wax buildup is, some of the dirt and grime that has accumulated over many, many years of that terrazzo flooring. So what we're proposing is not only to help restore that terrazzo, but also a cost savings moving forward, and that we would do an acid burn, taking off those layers of wax that are on the terrazzo. What they would place down would be a sealant, which would not require any further wax, waxing during the summers, any of the machinery that sometimes breaks down and is becoming antiquated, but would have that sealant on it. And anybody at the high school, if you look where that tape has been pulled, you can see the distinct difference in the flooring. So it will help with the preservation of that and also will save not only chemicals, but also manpower and time moving forward. And that was part of one of those projects we'd outlined. We actually had put it out to bid on a very restricted timeframe. The bids came in much higher than we had projected, so we sent it out for a rebid with a longer timeframe. It'll actually span two summers as we're working on other flooring and projects within that building. And that brought it down to where it fit within what we had budgeted for. So my recommendation would be to go with Art Mosaic and Tile, the $297,000 bid. And again, that will span two summers worth of time and we'll do all of the terrazzo at the high school.
Any questions? We had an opportunity at the study session to look at the floor over there and you could tell there was some differences there where the tape was.
You don't realize until you start looking, but it'll be a huge difference. And it'll save a lot of time, money, finances, moving forward as well.
Okay, so we have a bid from Art Mosaic Tile Company of $297,000. Need motion to approve that bid.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Sandy.
My second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried 7-0. Approval of auction surplus RHS choir practice room equipment.
So this is one of those, and I'm going to lean on Scott as well as he's trying to head this up. About a year and a half ago, two years ago, we brought a comprehensive list to the board. Some of those items were sold at an auction when we had the Harrison Property Auction. And just as a side note, the cleanup on that begins on Monday, the further cleaning of the brush and piles. But in that, we had several items that were sold at auction, others that at that time we had asked to be scrapped or recycled. These are those leftover components. And so what we are proposing is that, from that original list, we go back, we try one last time to auction those items listed at the top and to scrap and destroy those two items at the bottom that we know have no resale value at all. And then we'd like the board's permission, if these don't sell after the public auction, to go ahead and to either donate, if we can find somebody willing to take the items, or destroy.
Jason, did you find anybody that wanted a piano? Any of the kindergarten teachers?
No ma'am.
No takers at all?
No.
I didn't realize we had so many pianos. I mean, where were they hiding?
We actually, somebody tried to donate one again this last week. And we're very appreciative of those donations that just comes a time when we can't store all of those. And I think with some music teachers here...
When I came in 1990, those pianos were here.
They were wild.
And they were bad then.
Everything's electronic keyboard now.
It's not unique costs. Yeah, that's true too.
Any other questions on the choir room, practice room equipment? We'll have some that's auctioned and then what doesn't sell, scrap and destroy. So we need a motion to approve. Okay, a motion by Rick.
My second.
Second Kyle. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried 7-0. Approval of proposed speech and language pathologist contract.
Jen, do you mind providing an update as to where we are with SLPs, which are few and far between in the state? And I believe that we're blessed and that we are going to have person-to-person, face-to-face contact within our district, where many school districts are having to go over live stream and working with somebody through computers and screens. So blessed that Jen has worked so hard to locate some of those people to bring into our district.
So, right now, we have three full-time SLPs, as you probably know. One is on a teacher contract and two are contracted, since we couldn't find any SLPs last year. So we posted two of the jobs. And we got one applicant, which was Alicia Halt. So that's coming up later. So the other applicant, or the other SLP that we hired first, I gave her the option to stay and she agreed to stay. So this is through that contract company. It's the same company, the same, five days a week. She did start four days after the school year started, so the previous contract reflects that. So this contract is just 185 days. And this year, we were able to get her for seven and a half hours a day instead of seven, which we had last year, which is actually a full day, so... Any questions? We've been very happy with both. I think Mr. Snyder and Mr. Hawes would agree. We've been happy with both SLPs that we've contracted, so...
Especially finding something as hard as they are to find.
Yes.
And to find good ones, too. Anybody have any questions?
Are the terms, I'm sorry. Are the terms of the contract the same, except what you've mentioned, a half an hour more a day, for more days, because she started after the school year? But the rate the same?
The rate is the same for this year, yes, as in the last year.
Any other question? Need motion to approve the speech and language pathologist contract?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jenny.
My second.
Second by Stacy. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried 7-0. Thank you. Approval of the Riddle music adoption.
I believe that Ms. Weaver is going to lead us through this process, talk to the board about that.
Sure. Last year was actually the year the adoption was for the music department. And we decided to delay that a year because we had only two music teachers at the corporation at that time. And knew we'd be hiring the third one and wanted her to be part of that. Middle school and high school, they don't use a set curriculum because their fees come, they buy music, basically with theirs and equipment and things that they need. The elementary's different. And five years ago, we had the opportunity to try to a demonstration period of a new program that is online that is called Quaver. If you look it online, it's the wonderful world of Quaver and it's based out of Nashville, Tennessee. And what we found that that did for our music department is that it really increased the rigor of the music instruction that we have. And it also increased the amount of time that the kids would be attentive. It was so student-active. And it is all web-based. And it includes all of our music and resources that we need. So it eliminated the need for purchasing new books for us to have, which I know that when Lisa McMillan was in the elementary, she probably used the books more than what I did. But I also have the younger elementary, which it just didn't really serve their needs. And so after using that for a while and then bringing in a new teacher, we have looked at what is out there for adoption and really feel like Quaver Music is the route that we need to stay on. Because it has become a worldwide program now. I've actually, when I introduced a new song to my students that was from a small island north of Australia, was able to talk to a music teacher in Australia that also used Quaver Music. And she was able to tell me about this island in the Torrey Strait, so that I could relay that to my students and have real current information on that. And being based on the internet, they also have backup, so that if something happens with our internet, we're covered. We can still deliver our curriculum for that day. They're very supportive if we have problems with it. They're there to help. They also listen to the teachers and that if there's something that we like better, that would think that would make the lesson better, they will listen and make improvements. Every three months, we have new songs, new ideas, they're rolled out. And one of the big things that they have been working on with, in Quaver Music this year, is trying to do character education through music. And so a lot of the new songs that we're seeing are building in character education. The, I don't know how many of you have had access to the actual letter that was written up, but because of the success that we've seen in our music department over the last several years when we were using Quaver, it also is more economical because it's a subscription fee rather than buying books. And a lot of times, they have CDs that go along with it, that you have access to the music that you have to purchase. And they also would have big books and all of the supplemental things that come with it. We just feel like Quaver is not only best for our students, but also the most economic program for our school system at this time. So in working with this, Kyle was brought on board with this. We had a couple of teachers that have worked on this and then our administrators. And with that, we would recommend that we would adopt Quaver Music as our elementary music curriculum. And I'm not sure what else I need to say. Okay.
So is that 7,350, that's for the whole five years?
Yeah, that's a subscription cost.
So it's not for just each year?
And we still have one year of our initial agreement that we went into, so... Yeah, that year's, that cost is covered. So in a way, in essence, we have six years that it would take us through.
So it's basically like a digital library of music with topics you can zero in on?
It is a curriculum in that they work with the states in looking at their core values, that their standards that they have in music and in other areas, because it is cross-curricular in a lot of ways. And they develop lessons that follow along those standards. And this year happens to be the year that they are, because Indiana has new standards that have come out since Quaver first was written. So they're in the process of aligning all of those standards and making sure that it still does align to Indiana music standards. And there are lessons that are developed that you could just go in and say, "I want to teach meter to my first graders." And so I would go and choose a lesson on meter. Basically, it's divided up into three lessons. First one would introduce, the second one practice, the third one reviews and assesses. But as a teacher, I can go in and I can create my own lessons on meter and pull things that work best for me from those lessons that they've already developed. And I personally have a whole list of lessons that I have developed. And then I could share those lessons or look at other lessons that teachers around have done and see, because if I have something that didn't work, what did I do wrong? And then there's other teachers out there saying, "Hey, do it this way. This is what worked for me." And so it's, you've got your choice. You can either use what's already there or you can create your own lessons. But then there also is the music that supports that as well. And so, doing kindergarten concert, again tomorrow night, 6 o'clock at Columbia. One of the songs that we use is called "Stinky Pirates." I use that to teach meter of two and the marching meter. And yet, we also pulled that in to talk about health issues and then the importance of keeping clean as far as staying healthy. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of things that you pull in with it. All of that music was available to me, even a soundtrack, so that I could use it in concert form and not have their voices with it. So it's the most all-inclusive curriculum we've seen out there.
It is a full curriculum. It's not just a library of music and resources that the teacher has to go through. And it's certainly not, I've been in the music classroom quite a bit, and it is, it is not a, being web-based, it's not just a kids come in, she turns it on, and then 40 minutes of Quaver teaching the kids. There are bits and pieces. The full lessons involve the teacher, the teacher's involved the entire time. There's just resources that are available for whatever it is that they're teaching. And they use it really well. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a lot different than any other music curriculum in terms of the materials, as far as the, like you said, it's all standards-based. It's just, it's all online and available. And then we've also utilized it for e-learning days. And it's been very successful there as well. And I've even, you know, I've worked on it with my daughters and they've had the music e-learning days. And it was very engaging and productive for them as well. So, yeah, it's a full-out curriculum. It's a good, it's a good program.
What we've been able to do through the tech department is put a shortcut to their website on all of the kids' iPads. So they're just a click and logging on, they're just a click away from having what they need to follow along.
Anybody else have questions?
Jill, you mentioned for kindergarten, do you, is that where you pull for most of your concerts? Or do you sometimes use different?
It depends on what the, for me personally, I try to follow along with what the curriculum they're doing in their grade, at their grade level. So third grade, they talk about oceans and continents. So in third grade, I do music around the world. But I pull a lot of my music from their class playlist because they do a lot of international songs. So it allows us to do that. Last year, they introduced preschool curriculum. So it's been exciting to use that with the little ones. And they nail it as far as, how do you approach those younger kids? Because you can't do a full-out, just lesson... Because you can't do a full-out, just lesson from beginning to end. You have to break it up, break it up, break it up, break it up. And that's what you do. You do a song, "Oh, hey, we're going to do this story." "Hey, boys and girls, let's stand up because they're going to circle around and we're going to..." And so it's just constantly, it's just, even the activities they have are just so right on to the student's mind.
And not all the concerts are based off of that curriculum, like the second grade concert with, is focused on weather, which they're learning about in second grade, so it's cross-curricular. But in terms of actually coming from Quaver, you guys actually create your own, they create their own songs with, and the kids, each class writes their own songs. So Quaver doesn't, Quaver, it doesn't provide that necessarily because they're creating their own music. There's a little bit of everything.
Yeah, there really is. But, and even when we use something like that, Quaver teaches how to compose music. And in middle school and high school, they use GarageBand. Quaver has their own version that is geared to the younger kids of GarageBand. And so it, you know, the ways to make, help them create their own music is there as well. But yeah, there, we have to go out and use our own resources for different things. It's, you know, that's part of teaching. So.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jill. Good job explaining it.
And come and watch our classes sometimes. We just have a ball in there. Third grade, they're doing quarters right now.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the Quaver curriculum for the Riddle Music Adoption.
I move to approve.
Okay, motion by Kyle.
Second.
Second by Sandy. A inter discussion. All in favor? Any motion to carry, Senator? Okay, moving on to donations. Okay, we have Gracie and Methodist Church Mission Team, $500 to Riddles Students One Book, One School. Rochester Telephone Company, labor and equipment for construction of baseball batting cage. Alter Rosary Society, St. Joseph Church, $300 for Columbia Riddle backpacks. House of Decor, paint for Columbia Teachers Lounge makeover. Travis Ramsey, tile and labor for Columbia Teachers Lounge makeover. Trula Amick, $100 to JAG. Sai Azoda Sai Sorority, $300 for Riddle School. Laura Ricketts, clothing items for RMS Students in Need. And Lions Club, $200, Riddles One Book, One School. Were there any other additions?
Always look at candy, isn't it?
Yeah, I was looking. Okay, any questions about those? No, I need a motion to approve the donations.
So moved.
Motion by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Jenny. A inter discussion. All in favor? Any? Any motion to carry, Senator? Once again, as always, we thank the donations. Every dollar helps and, you know, as you see, there's a lot of different things covered here and every area can use a help. So really appreciate the community. Okay, next item, the field trip senior class graduation celebration.
Mr. Kiesling, if you'd like to share?
Yes. Senior classes, I'd like to go to Cedar Point this year. I'd like to commend the board for the extra two days on the end of the school year. Tucked in nice and neatly right in there on that Tuesday after we get back on that fall week is. So that worked out just perfectly for the seniors. They originally had it planned a little earlier. We saw that date, we said, "That's where it needs to go right there." So they are going to Cedar Point, sponsor Mr. Stasiak. And I believe right now, we've got sixty or a little more than that that are going to be able to go, be able to pay their way, but any overages will be handled through the senior class account. So yeah, that'll be a day trip, not an overnighter.
Anybody have any questions?
Sounds like fun.
Is the sixty due to like people not interested or have other things they're doing? I mean, that's about half the class, I would think.
That time of year, it's a little bit of everything. Yeah, yeah. And I, that was the last count. I think they, they continue to increase a little bit, but that was the last count. We've got a little more time than we otherwise would have had before the date of the actual trip. But you can always count ten, fifteen kids that are coming in late with stuff. So I would imagine you'd probably add about that amount to it.
Anybody else have any questions? So for good weather, too.
Yeah. As far as teachers and those that are going, I always am on standby. If they need me to go, I always step in and go. But I'm also helping man the shift there at school during those days as we wind up school. I tend to hate to leave school during that time just to make sure that everything's going smoothly. But it's also fun to go on those trips as I've done in the past. I've been to Cedar Point several times as an administrator with seniors, so it's always fun, so.
And Mr. Mc, I guess I didn't see on there, we're taking school buses, not like charter buses or anything.
Yeah. So, okay.
Thank you. Okay, need a motion to approve the seniors' class trip?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Jenny. All in favor? Okay, motion to carry. Okay, now we have RCTA request for recognition, extend, invitation.
I'm not sure whom, probably collect who first.
Somebody want to speak?
You just want me to kind of explain your walk-in, yes, sir. So RCTA is with our Unit Seven, whatever you want to call it, all the schools in Unit Seven, I think it's either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday this week are going to do walk-ins. And it's just a way of getting the public and people who really aren't maybe looking at the problems we're having with education and funding, to kind of get that word out and draw some attention to that. And all a walk-in is, Hope made a couple of notes for me, 7:30 to 7:45 where the parent drop-offs are, or student drop-offs, I should say. For each school, teachers will meet in those areas and school board, anybody in the public, students, any employee, they're welcome to come join. And I mean, essentially, all we're going to do is just be and walk into school. So I think everybody's going to wear red. Hope and Leah kind of have been more in tune with the walk-ins than I have. Am I forgetting anything, Hope?
I don't think so. We'll have signs and probably some really cool chants.
Hope will have some good chants, I'm sure. My daughter's Abby's school had their walk-in last week and they had the media there and she made the front page of the Courier-Journal. They had a good response.
And then along that line, something not exactly related, but along the same line, a lot of local units, associations are asking their boards to adopt a resolution that, well, because we're all in this together, right? We need more funding for education. I just saw on Twitter before I came over here, they're tweaking that funding bill and they just passed a new level of voucher where they would fund seventy percent of a student's tuition. Take a, you know, seventy percent of the cost and send that. So they're expanding the voucher program instead of reeling it back in. There were three amendments proposed, those were all defeated by voice votes. And so, you know, we're down to the last two weeks of the session. And we're trying to really get their attention that schools, especially like ours, you know, that two percent is not two percent for us, as you know. We look to lose funding in every, both proposals that have been in the House and the Senate. So we feel responsible for leading the charge and just saying, "Look, we need more funding for education." It's not just about teacher pay, it's not just about, you know, benefits and all those things that go with employees, it's about funding education for our kids. So I think, do they have copies of the resolution? So it basically just says, "Whereas the governing body of Rochester Community School Corporation of Fulton County, Rochester, Indiana, as a political subdivision of the state of Indiana, is charged with providing a free and appropriate public education for all students enrolled in the school district. Whereas the economic, cultural, and social future of Indiana is largely dependent upon the assurance of educational opportunity for its youngest citizens. Whereas the promise of any future requires sound, deliberate, and persistent investment in the present. Whereas a strong and vital public education system attracts and builds economic investment and development benefiting all. Whereas Indiana's national rankings on school, public school funding and teacher compensation have seen marked declines over the last decade, impacting Indiana's ability to attract and retain educational professionals upon whom we and our children depend. Whereas our own school district stands to lose funding each of the next two years under the current budget proposals. Whereas the people of this school district and this state, and more importantly, the public school children of this state deserve a future that includes increased opportunities coupled with reversal of the trends described herein. Whereas, under the Indiana Constitution and other statutes, the Indiana General Assembly and the governor are both authorized and empowered to ensure that the state's public school system is adequately funded and resourced. Whereas no one has sacrificed more to ensure our public school children receive a quality public education despite insufficient funding and resources, not of their making, than our public school teachers and school employees. And whereas, the Rochester School Board believes that our entire community, including parents, families, caregivers, business leaders, teachers, support professionals, school district administrators, neighbors, and friends support our educators as they participate in legally permitted activities, including hashtag Red for Ed, to support funding needed to educate our children and secure Indiana's future. Now therefore, be it resolved that the governing body of the Rochester School Corporation supports our educators and stands ready to take steps necessary to improve salaries and working conditions for our district employees. Be it further resolved that the governing body supports our school employees as they engage in legal activities that clearly make known their demands concerning necessary funding for meaningful teacher and support staff raises and increased educational funding. Be it further resolved that the governing body supports the First Amendment rights of its employees. Be it further resolved, the governing body urges the Indiana General Assembly and Governor to work urgently on behalf of the children and families in our state to take swift and meaningful action to pay teachers and support staff increased professional salaries. Passed and adopted by the governing body of the Rochester School Corporation this 15th April 2019." So basically, it's a lot of fancy words to say. We'd like to show the community that we're all in the Red for Ed movement together and that we all believe that we need increased funding for all those things that we mentioned. You've read all, you know all the facts. You guys are the ones that deal with the numbers. But we hope that you'll support us. We invite you to the walk-in or, you know, wherever you're working, wear red and tell people, "Hey, I'm wearing red today for education." So we would love to have you adopt this and join us on Thursday morning.
Is that this Thursday?
This Thursday, yeah.
At all four buildings?
At each building, yeah.
We just received this, you know, around noon or so today. A lot of us didn't get a chance to digest it very well. Board members, do you have any questions? Would you like to?
Yeah. I don't mind publicly stating, I will absolutely always support a teacher. Married to one, I prefer to go home and have a place to live. With that being said, I did read through this and I have some questions regarding who drafted this up. I assume there's some wording in here that I had trouble trying to understand. In the first part of "Now therefore be resolved," it talks about working conditions. And I would like to understand, I want to make sure there's no disconnect here. In the top says, "stands ready to take steps necessary to improve salaries and working conditions." I would like to know, do we have working conditions that are not being met for our teachers or any part of our staff?
I think what we're just talking about is, I mean, basically, really is class size. Maybe it should have said that. This is something that we got from ISTA and adopted for us, but I, the association has no major complaints about working conditions.
Okay. And then under legal activities, within the second paragraph, that's not defined. And before I, I mean, before I would sign anything or put my name on something because this, obviously, we've heard the talk about walkouts and this and that.
Well, that would be illegal.
Correct. But what do you define or what does the union define as legal activities? Because it's not defined in the paper.
As long as we are fulfilling our contract, our contractual obligations.
Okay. Those are the questions I had. Thank you.
So will it be wrapped up by 7:45?
Oh, yeah. We got to go in the building.
We got to go in our rooms by 7:45.
Right, because it's contract.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have no problem publicly telling you that I support you again. It's on record, I absolutely support you. I don't feel comfortable signing a paper. I think being given, we got it at noon today, thrown at us, I would love to be able to sit down, have a discussion. You have my full, I can't speak on behalf of the board, I can speak for myself. You've got my, oh, whatever you need to walk in, demonstrate. You guys deserve to be paid like professionals. I said that when I debated to get this job. I will say that now. You need to be paid like professionals. There's no doubt in my mind. If I had a magical wand to create more money for you all, there ain't no doubt I would do that. I think you've been attacked from every angle possible at the state, at the state legislative, the way they're, the way they come at educators. It's wrong, the voucher system's wrong. There's just a lot wrong. So you guys do whatever you need to do by all means to help yourself out. It's a shame that you have to go to that level, but I can't sign a piece of paper. I'm sorry. Not yet.
Well, I apologize for the lateness, but the walk-in and all that was just organized at the end of the week because we've been trying to give the legislature time to...
Do something.
Do something. And when the, was it the Senate that just came out or the House? The Senate. You know, everybody decided, we have to show them that we're serious because we were told this fall, the legislators don't think we care enough to make a difference. So, you know, we've decided we have to stand up and say, "Hey, this matters. We don't want teachers working two jobs. We don't want teachers qualifying for free reduced lunch." You guys know all this, I'd like to tell you. That's all we're trying to do is bring attention and try to make a difference.
Yeah, I, you're not going to find a more pro-teacher board. I mean, as you know, you have four spouses here. You have the mother teacher, you have a teacher. And Rick's always on board for the right cause. Right?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, like Kyle says, is this time-sensitive? I mean...
We have two weeks until the legislation wraps up.
So we'd have a couple of weeks to digest this better, I mean, to be fair to...
They'll just be out of session at that point. So it's, I don't know if it's two weeks.
And the walk-ins will be over.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody has a problem on the board with the walk-in as long as meets contract. I mean, that's your own time before school.
I appreciate what you've done to this point as well. I appreciate the articles in the paper. I appreciate the social media presence. Our, we, just like the teachers have an association, the school board has an association, and the people that are lobbyists are working very closely with ISTA's lobbyists, because you're right, it's all mixed in together, all in this move from public education. I appreciate how you're drawing attention to Dr. McCormick and her frustrations and she's being very outspoken and is an advocate for us. I'm sure you've been in contact with our local people, with Jack Jordan, with Randy Head. They encounter a lot of resistance at the state level, but they have been people who've been in contact with us, too. So we appreciate that and you're getting your message out that way.
You know, I think our administrators and the corporation has tried as hard as we can to give what we can. And some of that's working through insurance and any funding possible that may be through stipends or stuff that, but yeah, as I said, comes down to getting the funds to start with. And yeah, it isn't fair. I mean, even within school districts, where Abby teaches, the top of scale there is like $15,000 higher than it is here. So there's imbalance in that respect, too. Of course, the bigger schools may be, you know, more affluent areas, too. But it seems like that's the problem. The bigger cities, the more affluent areas, getting more of the funding, out of proportion funding, is the way I see it. So we got to... So, we've got to keep on the legislators. Yeah, I think the board definitely supports you. If we could have some time to digest the resolution a little better.
What would be a more appropriate time for, I mean, instead of two weeks, I mean, like, in a week if we got back to you on the resolution?
I mean, we just thought it would be a chance for us all to show kind of a united front. So, I mean, I think whenever that happens, it's just an opportunity.
Legally, we just want to make sure we're doing right.
Sure.
You know, there's things we have to watch out for too. So, it's not because we don't support you. Don't take it that way.
What are the concerns to digest it?
Well, we had some about some of the wording. And some of the members just want to, you know, like I said, we got it noon or so, and then some of them didn't get it till they got home from work to read through it, so... As I look at it, I don't see any big concerns myself, but if board members have concerns, you know, we have to make sure everybody's satisfied with the decision they're going to make.
I just, me personally, I don't think that, I mean, we're all here hearing what you're saying, but I think your reluctance, I think your reluctance to sign it, I think that sends a message that some people won't understand.
Well, we've given a reason why tonight, we can still bring up the vote, but I want to make sure we got the vote we want. I hope you understand that too.
I do. I mean, you just have to understand, you know, that works. To, sorry. I guess, Clint, my under question, my question is, what's the difference between a public, me telling you that you have support from me, I don't know about the rest, but from me, or signing a piece of paper? What's the difference? Because we're not asking you to give us a public, this is the public, sign that it is the public recognition.
Right.
But I think, in our opinion.
Correct.
But I also think in respect to us, it's unfair to spring this at noon, right before a meeting where, I worked during the day as well, and I had, I briefly got a review it, I get home, I don't have much time, I mean, to go through it. You know, as a board, we work as one, and I just think it's, you know, if you'd have got this to us last week, I don't, I probably wouldn't have had a problem, we probably had time to digest it. But to spring it on us today and ask us to sign it today is too much. I just, I, again, I'm pro-teacher, I can't be any, I can't say it anymore. I am all for educators and getting whatever they can. Mike, I mean...
Why was the late date? Why was it held till today that we received it? Could have been gotten to us earlier.
We didn't get the information until the weekend, and then we had to meet together and, you know, fine tune it, make sure it was okay with everybody. And, you know, so, I mean, I guess we could have had it yesterday if we had gotten together over the weekend. But like I said, we didn't get our walk-in organized until Thursday and Friday, so, I mean, actually, we should just all be blaming the state of Indiana and the legislatures. I mean, that's what this is about. This isn't our fault, it's not our problem, it's not your fault, it's not your problem. This is all about the people in the state of Indiana who are running our government. That's the bottom line. They're the ones who are forcing us to be a little difficult and ask, you know, ask for public support and find things and that you guys, it's sad that you guys have to say, "Hey, we support teachers." You shouldn't have to say that. You should live in a state where the people who run it say, "We're going to give you, school board, enough money to run the programs and pay the people a fair wage and run the school to the best of your abilities," but they're not doing that.
I too echo the support. I also would, I'm trying to hear what you're saying. So, you're asking us to make a decision that we've only had a couple hours and no discussion, and something that you received from the state and had hours and discussion, making sure it was correct? You're asking us to not have that same time and rule on this? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think we're fine waiting. Yeah. I mean, we're just giving you the opportunity based on the information we had at the time. We're not demanding anything, obviously. It's just a piece of paper. We're just asking. So, if that's not, I mean, you know, that's up to you guys, whether that's something you want to do today or...
Give them time to...
Another time, sure. We get it, absolutely.
Is signing this costing us anything?
If I could ask, Ted, far as legal perspective on this, it's more than a piece of paper, right?
Well, it's a resolution, which is a sense of the board. Part of what Hope says is, there is an effort here to put pressure on legislators, whether the board as a body, you know, a separate political body created by the Indiana Legislature wants to do that, that's a separate question than, do you want to support teachers? It is a resolution. I don't suspect that there would be any reverberations or kickback as a result of this, but you never know. We've seen politicians do that with actually some regularity over the last few years. You know, somebody says something, somebody else kicks them in the teeth. But as a resolution, it is not a commitment that you're going to read what minimal treasury the school corporation has to provide, that you're simply joining in the demand for more from the state, so... But it is a resolution, it's not an ordinance, it's not a policy statement. It's simply a statement of a sense of the board.
Thank you. Have more questions?
Would Thursday or Friday this week be enough time? Since our walk-in's on Thursday?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
As long as we have enough time to advertise another meeting.
Right, you have to call a meeting, have 48 hours notice of the call of the meeting, so they couldn't do it before Thursday, sometime during the day Thursday.
If we want some wording removed out of this resolution, who do we go to for that?
It's your resolution. You can rewrite it, it's your resolution.
Okay, we don't need permission.
No, you don't need permission from them. They may not like the resolution you come up with, but it's your resolution.
Oh, I think it reads, I'll be honest, I think it reads fine, most of it. There's just a couple of things in there that I would like taken out.
Right.
That doesn't, that hopes that doesn't apply to Rochester and its working conditions.
I think that should something similar come up in the future, the best course of action, and not always do we have the best opportunities, given time constraints, but it would be great to come together to form the resolution together, and I think that is probably what some of the, a little bit of the resistance is, is that instead of collaboratively coming up a resolution, it was your sign a resolution. But I think the spirit of the resolution, everyone agrees with.
So, do you want me to try to schedule a meeting for, so the earliest would be Thursday, which will be after the...
It could be in conjunction with their, it couldn't be at their walk, but it could be on, if this, the walk-in is a public show, it is to engage the media, it is to generate support and awareness, that seems like a perfect time to have a resolution. It would be on that day, even if it's not exactly at that time.
I think you'd have it signed before the walk-in.
Well, we would have to meet, we have to meet, since we have all of us.
Enough days.
We have to have enough days in between to advertise it, and so...
We don't have a...
You can't get it in to advertise before 7:30 tomorrow morning, probably, so...
Well, it's 48 hours from the time to get a notice.
And Tyra's here.
Tyra's here.
Tell her.
Steph Force here.
She might go put something in tomorrow if it's important.
But if you want to have, schedule a meeting at 8:00 AM, you can do that. Have the board meet at that time. It would be after the walk-in, but it would be about as early as you could realistically do that. But then, you also want to retain the time to have the conversation you want to talk about, and maybe to redraft the resolution if that's part of the proposal, so, you know, I would anticipate you would want to schedule at least an hour, starting at 8:00. If they're comfortable with the resolution coming out an hour and a half after they're done with the walk-in, that's about as good as you can do right now. Unless you want to meet at 9:30 Wednesday night, I don't think that's the will of the board.
Board, need time to meet and make adjustments to the resolution? Is that your thoughts, or...
I think adjustments are needed, yes. And I would love to sign it.
And we would like for you to be at our school's physical line.
I've already been forewarned, I'll be there.
If we have questions, who should we contact?
You can contact me or Glenn.
Just one of the things you need to know, we're very comfortable in front of kids and, you know, interacting and reacting and teaching children. We're fish out of water when it comes to this type of thing. But yet, especially, I think you'll find that some of your more seasoned teachers are just really, really concerned about this, because as you know, we're losing good, quality people, and it's just not teachers, it's IAs and down the line that we're losing. And ultimately, it's the kids that suffer the most. So, we're really here for the kids. But we're not perfect in our approach to how to do this, because this isn't our expertise at all.
You shouldn't have to be in, put in this position.
That's correct.
I mean, if things were done right.
That is correct.
So, yeah, you know, I don't blame you for, that's for sure, because that's not your job to have to do this, but sometimes you do. So, we're looking at Thursday morning, 9 o'clock, is that working on this time?
Thursday at 9:00?
Or Thursday morning.
Yeah, whatever time you want us to get.
Is that what you're saying?
You can call the meeting, but do you want to have a motion to table this until that meeting?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Right.
We'll make sure we've got something lined up here, then, will that work? Or, I mean, Joe, you probably work for me?
Yeah. I'm good, yeah.
Thursday at 9:00, Chris and I are supposed to be at the superintendent's study council in regards to graduation pathways that is presented by the IDLE from 9:01.
That's probably something we can do to put on a resolution.
It's probably something, I mean, we always look ahead and we know, but this would be something that you may...
Yeah.
I can rearrange, I have some, I can rearrange it.
That work? See any?
Thursday at 9:00?
I may have to re-mail me then.
No, it's all right.
Thursday at 9:00.
That's what we're kind of...
Admin building?
Okay.
Yep.
Thursday AM, 9:00 AM?
Well, there's...
I appreciate you guys changing your schedules around to do that.
Is that in unison with them? Will they be with us? I mean, I look at this as one team. If we're going to draft a resolution, I would like to draft it with...
We want to make it work.
I mean, we want everybody to be on board, like what Jenny said, if we kind of feel like you guys got this drafted, which is fine, and brought it to us, if we all draft it together, that's a unification statement to me, so, or unified statement, sorry.
Would you be able to have a representative, at least one?
Yeah, we can work it out. Thursday, Thursday at 9:00, I could come.
Just, I guess, get with Jana and just let her know if there's coming, and we can...
Okay. Jana will not be able to attend, but it's just one item that the board can...
That's fine, yeah, you're good.
I'm trying to find somebody else who has a prep period then, or, I might be a little late, but I have some line to fill that's passing time, prep time at this. Can I assume you need here?
Head building, yeah. Yeah, as you can see, you know, the board is taking this serious, and we just want to make sure we do it right, and we're, you know, trying to adjust our schedules so we can get it done as quickly as possible, so...
Who says that one?
Okay. So, with that, I'll need a motion to table this until...
Motion to table.
Okay, motion by Kyle, second, second by Rick. All in favor? Okay. Thank you for coming in and explaining everything. Appreciate it.
I have one question.
Okay.
Is someone bringing donuts? We'll make sure he is.
Kyle, that's a classic, he's always...
I typically don't donut do these things. It doesn't ever make it, but I bring it.
Well, it is Monday, Tuesday, so they had a lot of supper.
Yeah. He's a fish. Don't want to wash anybody's feet.
Personnel report, hiring Alicia Hill, speech language pathologist for 2019-20 school year, pay rate $55,000 annual. Joanne Smith, instructional assistant, riddle, pay rate $8.61. Jessie Powell, food service assistant at high pay rate $9. Patricia Elliott, food service assistant, riddle, pay rate $9.94. Maternity leave, Marnie Luneier, middle school special education. Kristen Contreras, Columbia, grade one. FMLA. Alyssa Boosley, Velpedio, Columbia instructional assistant. Amber Reinhold, Columbia treasurer, intermittent leave. Intercession change, Allison Butler, substitute for Kenzie Collins for two days due to death in the family. Summer reading program, Leslie Strim, Kylie Day, Amy Banks, Amy Freeman, Nikki Overmeyer. Summer intercession, Leslie Strim, riddle, Mona Zion, riddle, Angie Smith, riddle. Are there any additions to that?
Not that I'm aware of.
If you have any questions?
That can't be summer intercession, riddle, is it?
Is that before Columbia's intercession?
No.
Wow.
Just looking at that. Where is Columbia?
He beat you.
Any additions, Stacy?
Somebody's wandering around here.
Okay.
Well done, Luke, well done.
Any questions on any of those? If not, the motion through the personnel report.
So need.
Okay, motion by Sandy.
I'm sorry.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries, sends here.
So, the employment agreement that you see is for Victoria Zellers, and it's an effort to us, for us to comply with the audit that we just went through. Victoria's job description as outlined is more of a salary position rather than an hourly position. Right now, we are paying her hourly, which means many of those details that within her job description, we should be paying overtime for, and that was a part of the agreement. And the auditors, when they came in, wanted to see that in an agreement form, which would be this contract that Mr. Wagner helped us generate. And what you're seeing is a reflection of what she currently makes, so it's not adding to or taking away from her salary, it's making that agreement within a contractual form so that we're in compliance with what the auditors are looking for as far as salary versus hourly employees and their job description.
Do you have any questions?
I had a couple. On number one, it says employer hereby employs employee in the capacity of position hired. Should that say head ner... of position hired. Should that say head nurse, or is, okay, so that needs to be fixed. And then, in number three, do we have performance bonuses?
No.
Yes.
We do? Performance bonuses?
Teacher get the teacher appreciation grants, and administrators oftentimes get the same thing.
Okay, so Victoria would be eligible for that? She would not be eligible for that?
Well, that would be determined on a case-by-case basis. This creates the eligibility. This forms contracts for any administrator who's not carrying a teaching license.
Okay, so, I, if, is it your discretion whether we leave that in? But, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Now, the motion to approve?
I made the motion to approve with the changes that you made with the position of...
Okay. Motion by Stacy to approve with the changes noted.
Second.
Second by Sandy. Are you in discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries, send it. Okay, superintendent business.
I just want to thank everybody, especially the teachers and support staff that's there here this evening, for those open, honest communications and that relationship we continue to build and putting yourself out there for students every day. I think it's more, we're seeing more than just salary issues. It comes down to more what the state is asking us to do in regards to mental health and feeding, clothing, and those types of things. So, sincere thank you to each of you who's here this evening, and to those who couldn't make it this evening. We appreciate it. We give you very much so.
I'd like to thank all the teachers for coming tonight. I mean, that shows you care. I mean, you took time to put together the resolution, bring it to the board, and, you know, we're going to do our part and work on it too, so we have our full support. Any other comments from the board, or anybody in the audience, let's see. If not, we'll adjourn. Thank you for coming.